Hey, good evening. How y'all doing? We're gonna go ahead and get this council meeting started. Ms. Harris, we're gonna ask you to give us a beautiful prayer for the day.
Lord, if you leave me, I shall not stray. Lord, let me walk each day with thee. Lead me, oh Lord, all day. Heavenly Father, we come before you right now, oh God. Just wanna thank you, Lord, for another day. You've been so good, you've been so kind. We lift you up high, oh God, in this city, God, in this council meeting, oh God. Cover us right now, oh God. Lift us right now, oh God. Encourage each and every one, oh God. Continue, Lord, keep out of Mara. Rock him in the cradle of your love, oh God. Continue with his vision, oh God. Lord, we wanna thank you right now. Cause you've been so good, you've been so kind. And we thank you for another Mother's Day coming, oh God. Bless every mother that it is, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus. We bless you right now, God. Continue to lift the city up, oh God. As we take it forward, oh God. Lord, keep us in your care, God. Keep us in your care, rock us in your cradle of your love. Cover us with your blood, lift us with your love. Let that love connect with each other, God. Lord, we thank you right now. We thank you right now, God. We thank you for freedom, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus. Thank you for rebuking COVID-19, oh God. In this city, God, and all the cities around. Thank you for our first responders, God. Continue to bless the fire department and police department. Continue to bless our city workers and sanitation workers, God. Continue to keep the cap on this city, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus. Wrap us, God, encourage us, God. Lord, let your spirit dwell in this city. Cover this place with your blood, fill it with your love, oh God. Wrap it in your mercy, oh God. Do what you do, oh God. Bless this city to more, God. Keep us connected, God, with one another. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
We remain standing for the flag. To the flag, United States of America. And to the republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Clerk, will you call the robe, please?
Mayor McClintock.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda. Councilmember Bruce.
Here.
Councilmember Tatt.
Here.
Councilmember Crune.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilmember Mohammed. Councilmember Mohammed. Councilmember Monday.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
With the quorum being present, nine out of ten. We're gonna get started with our meeting. I'm gonna call it executive session after we do all of our resolutions and ordinances. I get any corrections to the minutes? All in favor, aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved. We had no old business. I'm gonna ask that we add, what would be our 05? And the Chestnut Levy property liens. And someone also to make within that motion read by title only from 01, 02, 03, 04, and 05, if added, and the levy.
City Attorney, would you read those by title only?
I would like to, yes. Thank you.
Mayor, make a motion that we add 05 to the agenda. And a permission request.
So, Mel, Tracy made the motion, you second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Opposed?
Did you do everything?
No, you left that by title only.
Okay.
Now, the chairman made the motion.
Okay.
I made the motion for the city attorney to read the R1, 01, 02, 03, 04, and 05. And the other by title only.
I get a second. All in favor, aye. Opposed? It's on you to say the term.
All right. Ready. R1 is a resolution to distribute Southland Casino Racing Charity Day proceeds by elected officials. Mayor, City Council of the City of West Memphis as provided by law and for other purposes.
I get a motion and second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Will you give a resolution number?
It's gonna be Resolution 2253.
That number is 2253. All right. City Attorney, 01?
01 is an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to the power supply agreement with Nextera Energy Marketing LLC for additional long-term capacity, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes.
Mayor, if I may ask, if we suspend the rules and place it on a second reading?
I get a second. You say?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If asked, city attorney, 02? I mean, 01, I'm sorry, second reading.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to the power supply agreement with Nextera Energy Marketing LLC for additional long-term capacity, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Mayor, if I may ask, if we further suspend the rules and place it on its third reading?
So, all in favor, aye. Opposed?
An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to the power supply agreement with Nextera Energy Marketing LLC for additional long-term capacity, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I get a motion and second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Todd, do you just wanna give it a little brief update?
Again, as y'all know, as we move forward into a new world, you know, the mayor talked to us prior when we were having management meetings, we're thinking out of the box. We have the opportunity with a solar facility being built locally within Creighton County to start changing from fossil fuels to renewable energy. And this portion of the facility is, is being bought by somebody else. They're buying the energy and the renewable energy credits. So the capacity was available. Because of our ties with Nextera, it was made available to us. We will be able to secure capacity for the City of West Memphis out to 2039. This does not take care of 100%, but it secures about two-thirds of our current capacity needs. So it helps us in securing any financial risk in the future and then stabilizes our costs going forward. What else does this do for us? Year 2024, three years from now, we can say that 85% of our capacity resource needs are coming from locally owned solar facilities. Locally built solar facilities in our backyard. I don't think anybody else in Arkansas will be able to say that. And that's, again, keeping our rates also where they're at for our customers. Fixed rate. It's a fixed rate contract on the capacity out to 2039.
And we are the second lowest utility rate in this state.
Now, we, I'll be coming back to y'all. We still have to take care of the energy needs, okay? But this is the capacity portion, and this is the part that scares me. Cause remember, 2028, as y'all know, White Bluff is closing. We own a portion of those plants, have done a lot of good things for us over the years and kept our rates low. We gotta start taking care of those resources. 2030, Independence is closing, okay? And that's 3,200 megawatts of capacity coming off of the market that we've got to start addressing. Okay?
Todd, when you say start addressing, meaning, I mean, have you started looking at things already?
This is a part of what to start addressing. This is me addressing it.
Okay.
Cause this contract is, starts in 2024 and goes out to 2039. So, you know, there'd be some other things we're looking at, you know? We might be coming back and looking at potentially building some gas generation or batteries or, I mean, just any type of technologies that are, as they come. Forward, and the price gets to where we can, again, reliable energy, maintaining good, lower-cost energy for our customers. Be competitive in the world as we know it, and as it's changing.
Amen.
Yeah.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
All right. If there is any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Also, can I get a motion and second to approve that emergency clause?
Take it.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed with the emergency clause. Mr. Clerk, will you give 01 a number, please?
2576.
That number is 2576. The city attorney, 02?
02 is an ordinance granting a special use permit for all-in-one auto sales, permitting an automotive sales used dealership in a C2 open display commercial district.
I told him, Mr. Councilman Murray, you want to read it out?
Yeah, I would ask that we suspend the rules and put it on second reading.
I get a second.
On second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? City Attorney?
An ordinance granting a special use permit for all-in-one auto sales, permitting an automotive sales used dealership in a C2 open display commercial district.
Mayor, I would like to ask to suspend the rules and put it on third reading.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? City Attorney?
An ordinance granting a special use permit for all-in-one auto sales, permitting an automotive sales used dealership in a C2 open display commercial district.
Is there any discussion?
I have some discussion.
Okay.
Okay, I was looking at the recommendations from the planning commission. It says no outside storage of wrecked vehicles on the lot. And I'm, I'm wanting to address this because we have a lot of this going through our city. So, basically, what happens if this is violated?
Well, if it's violated, the code enforcement officer's supposed to go out there. Yeah. Yeah, he would go out there and address the violation and write it up.
Okay, I understand that, but we still have a lot of that going on now. So we, if this is what we're gonna do, we need to make sure that these different companies are being ticketed. Because when we talk about cleaning up the city, and people in Ward 5 are talking about the housing in that area, which is in Ward 5. I know this is a different ward, but we have a lot of this going on in Ward 2. So all I ask is, is that we make sure that when these people violate the ordinances, we act on it. Cause that's all I'm asking.
Okay. That's, that's, that's for, matter of fact, the owners are here. Mr. Ambrose, who am I, sorry? Will you stand for a minute? I do agree with Councilman Bruce's, I'm sorry, Dr. Bruce's sentiments. And I think the council will approve this, but we, we working hard to make sure we have a clean city. And we just asking you that you all just truly follow the guidelines and do everything that the ordinance say and provide for you to do, and you have successful business. So I'm just asking you all just to make sure that you follow those guidelines for us, please.
That's all we ask. That's all we ask.
Mr. Clerk? Can I ask them to come up partially and, and give us that word? Cause I'm like Casman Bruce that...
Yeah, Mr. Clerk, how long have you been up on Seventh Street? I think it was Seventh Street.
Been a while. Eight years.
About eight years? Yes, yeah.
Does a good job.
Yeah. What's the address there?
1075.
1075. I've, you know, I've been to your business several occasions. I've never seen a wrecked car on that, on that lot. I've never seen it. I have. You might have been to some there, and it's always neat and clean. It's always neat. And I wanted to say that about your business, cause I, you know, I frequent your business. And you, I would have commended on it.
And also, I went by this property that he's, we are discussing right now. And he's made vast improvements even up to this point on it.
And I, I agree with that, cause I've been there as well. But I just wanna make sure that we continue, trying to make sure that our city is cleaned up. Like I said, I haven't seen any wrecked vehicles at your place either. And I commend you for that. But there are some others that we're gonna have to look at.
Is this, this location, this 509 North 7th, was, was that a previous car lot or?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
If there's no other discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Congratulations. Mr. Clerk, will you give 02 a number, please?
2577.
2577? Did we miss something?
I remember I wrote down the first and second reading, but I did not write down the third.
Oh. Yeah. I read, I, city attorney did the first reading, then Councilman Murray did the second and the third.
All right. So you made the motion to approve. I don't think there was a motion to actually approve it after the third reading.
I get a motion and second to approve.
Make a motion. Second.
Second. Councilman Willis and Councilman Murray need the second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we got the numbers, 2577. Okay. The city attorney, 03?
All right. 03 is an ordinance granting a special use permit for Deebel towing, permitting an auto wrecker service in an I1 general industrial district.
I didn't hear nothing on this, so they just on for his first reading and be back in two weeks for a second reading. 04?
Can I add an address in it?
I think it says 600 to 610 East Jefferson on the ordinance.
Then there's Ward 2 again.
Yeah, I have the same concerns there.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the same concern.
Okay, well, you go by and look at it, let me know what you're feeling, and we are. What's Hutchinson, you should, I'm sorry.
04 is an ordinance granting a special use permit for Sunbelt Car Wash Services, permitting a car wash in a C1 general business district.
What's the address to that one?
Yeah.
Says 600 West Service Road.
That's gonna, it'll be on your planning commission.
Okay, it's on for his first reading. Give you all a little opportunity to go by and look at it. So he'll be back for a second reading in two weeks. 05?
05 is an ordinance waiving competitive bidding to replace the aged and damaged equipment at the West Memphis Flood Control Pump Station, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
This ordinance was brought up during public works, and I think all the council people, you know, has just agreed to add to the agenda and bring it forward.
Mayor, may I ask that we suspend the rules and place it on second reading?
Say. Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so second reading.
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding to replace the aged and damaged equipment at the West Memphis Flood Control Pump Station, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Mayor, may I ask if we further suspend the rules and place it on its third reading? Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's on the third reading.
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding to replace the aged and damaged equipment at the West Memphis Flood Control Pump Station, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I get a motion and second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion.
Mayor, I guess one thing, I don't know if Todd's still here. Even though you waive competitive bidding, you still receive quotes. Multiple quotes, is my understanding, and this is the lowest of the ones you did receive?
That is absolutely correct. We had an engineer do a formal design, because this motor control center that we're asking for is actually medium voltage. It's actually 4,160 volts these motors run at, not 480. So, he did a special, and he went to each company. He went to the three major companies, ABB, Siemens, and GE. And he got quotes. One of them was a verbal quote. The other two were formal quotes given to him, and we are accepting the low bid.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Mr. Clerk, will you give that a number as well?
2578.
And we've got the Section 2 emergency clause.
2578. Can I get a motion and second to approve that emergency clause?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's all of our resolution and ordinances. I'm gonna ask for a motion and a second to go into a quick executive session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Back, can I get a motion and second to rejoin back into the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, before we start, I just wanna give an explanation of why we went into executive session. I took the council into executive session and answered any questions concerning and giving them the total outcome on the police investigation that we have had going on here in the city. So they are informed that those decisions and what's the next move that we are gonna go with here in West Memphis. And I answered any questions or concern that they may have had. That's the reason why we went into executive session, because we're dealing with employees here. So, personal and private information. All right. Permission request for the mayor to sign an agreement between the city of West Memphis and Tower Ventures. I asked in pre-council that we were tabled at for two weeks. Can I get a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's tabled. To next week.
Well, two weeks.
Two weeks, two weeks, I'm sorry, I don't know why I keep saying next week. Yeah. Also, permission for a certificate of public convenience for a taxi cab service. Can I get a motion and second to approve?
Make a motion. Second.
All right, any discussion?
Mayor, I guess, just so I understand, currently, we only have one service in West Memphis, correct?
From my understanding, I think Razorback closed down, so I don't think we have none, unless it's something that I...
I haven't seen any cars in a while. I know we have specialty services, I think we have two of those, but not...
No, I have no cab service, no.
We actually have one.
Who?
A Let's Go transportation.
Let's Go transportation?
It's a, it's a taxi that they've had drivers come in and buy vehicles.
Oh, okay.
So we have to notify all three, but two specialties, we sit out in Let's Go.
Okay.
Well, any other questions about this?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, can I get a motion and second to approve the planning and commission recommendations?
What's the name of this service?
What's the name of your service, Texas?
Triple C.
Triple C.
Triple C.
Thank you all.
All right, can I get a motion and second to approve the planning commission recommendations?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it passes. Also, this is the second item that was added. It's the Chestnut liens that I was asking to see what you all find in your heart to, to release these liens off the property so the house can go to be rebuilt.
May I say something before then?
Yes, sir.
I went over there and looked after they had done it started. And they had cleaned that place up, so it looked like a totally different spot. They went in there and knocked those trees down, all that brush. And they had so many tires where they, you can't imagine. They had, they had just dumped back in there. And they have done so much in there till, I'm for releasing a lien, because they didn't clean that thing up. And I'm, and if they do no more than just do that, I would release the lien for that, because they have cleanup over there. And I, and I wish y'all would go with me on that, because I, I see that going forward. Thank you.
I have a question. Are, are we looking into the direction of possibly building more homes over there and doing away with the trailers?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Affordable homes. There gonna be affordable homes and get them trailers out of there.
Actually, Dr. Bruce, once this meeting over, I'd like to talk to you and tell you the plan. I hate to put it out.
All right, okay.
All right, there any other discussion? I get a second to Councilman Monday's motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. I guess we'll get that information. It's waiting. All right. Public Works, you say you have a minutes, Council?
No, we met this past Tuesday on schedule. We just had got the follow-up notes yet.
Okay.
But I would like to make a comment about, May the 15th is the America Beautification Day.
Okay.
And there's gonna be dumpsters set at each ward. That, that, May the 15th is a Saturday, so I was wanting to save this until Ms. Councilman Mohammed was here, because she's doing the, she's doing the administrative side of it, and I was doing the other side of it, so... But the, I'll get with Nick and John, Rick, and give them some of the details so they could start publishing it.
Is it safe to say you miss Councilwoman Mohammed on that Public Works project?
Let me tell you, let me tell you something. She is a, she's a diamond. I mean, she, she, she's done it so much, she, she could do it by looking at the back of her hand. And for someone just to walk into it like I did, it was a little bit, a little bit difficult to pick up everything that had to be done. But the dumpsters are ordered, they'll be set in place on the 13th, which is actually a Thursday. And then Saturday, the 15th, will be the cleanup day. And they're gonna leave the dumpsters out till the 19th. For people to continue to use them. And hopefully, we'd get a lot of stuff cleaned up. I've already got some people over in Ward 3 and Ward 1 that are asking about some of the signup sheets and some of the shirts that you get. And they wanna do some cleanup. We had a, an organization here was one of them, and they're gonna be a good part of what we do, I think, so... But anyhow, I can tell you the locations, and Ward 1, it's gonna be Matthews Park. Ward 2 is gonna be behind the Civic Center, Eugene Wood Civic Center. Ward 3 is gonna be West Memphis Christian. Ward 4 is gonna be Bettis and Thompson. And Ward 5 is gonna be 17th and Jackson.
Give me four again, you went so fast.
Four's gonna be Bettis and Thompson.
Betty and Thompson.
Mm-hmm.
And five?
Five's gonna be 17th and Jackson. Ward 1 is Matthews Park.
Yes, yeah.
And two is Civic Center.
Two's the Civic Center.
Okay. Three, West Memphis Christian.
Yeah, West Memphis Christian.
That concludes your report?
Well, that concludes part of it. I'll, I'll do the rest of it in two weeks.
I did want to add, Public Works did, the director reported that they picked up over 600 tires.
They did.
Now, I don't know do tires have seeds in them? But it seemed like when we picked up those 600 tires, they started growing more tires. That's why I've been working with city attorney and the city clerk, who gave me some information about some things the municipal league had recommended. So I have it with city attorney right now, and once he go through and tabled out if he need to add, we make the, some teeth more stronger in their ordinance, because like I said, when them tires came up, unless the gas seeds leaking, they coming right back in the same spot, so, you know? And another thing, too, in order for us to get this city clean, our sanitation department is doing everything they can do. Our citizens really got to help us. Simply, if it's just cleaning your own property, cutting the yard, picking up everything in your, in your, in your yard, that will help go a long way in making our city better. We can't do it all alone. We can't do it all alone. Me and Councilman Bruce talked a little bit about it, and he was very adamant, like with the trash. Put your trash in a trash bag. Just don't throw it in the garbage can. You know, make sure you do the things right so we can continue doing what we need to do. Move your trash can up to the front. I got a call and I had bonded to go out and talk to the lady, but he showed the Rubicon, Rubicon, one of the best things we ever got. It showed for the last couple of weeks, every time we go back, there's trash in the back. You're not doing backyard service unless you are disabled and you meet those qualifications. But it don't take none to push that garbage to the front and get it, you know, so I'm asking as well, I'm asking my departments to do more and over beyond what they supposed to. The citizens got to help us, especially in certain parts of our city.
Well, I've been helping and they've been picking up my garbage on time. I have to go down there every, every week and tell them to pick up my garbage. And I told them next time I come, I'm just gonna come in and dump the garbage down and let me borrow the truck.
Well, just call me. Call me. Yeah, I get, you know, I worked on the back of the garbage truck at one time, so just call me, I'll make sure we get it.
I know, that's bad. They gonna take that garbage feed off my light bill.
Yeah, I guess you talking to Todd now.
Did the police meet?
No, sir.
No?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. A and P?
Uh, yes, sir. A and P did meet. I did pass out the notes. I'm not gonna read everything verbatim, but I do wanna highlight the commissioners agreed to, well, I'm sorry, let me go back. The West Memphis A and P Commission met on March twentieth at noon. The commissioners agreed to capacity limitations for the Eugene Woods Civic Center. And I'm making this comment for the public, so one hundred and fifty will be the number, I'm sorry, Eugene Woods Civic Center of one fifty. The civic auditorium of two hundred and fifty for the next ninety days. We will revisit the capacity limits according to the number of active COVID cases after ninety days. We also want to make aware of the Tenth Annual Great Steak Cookoff, which will be held this Saturday, May eighth. I don't know if Mr. Jackson wanted to are you gonna let him come up, or is there anything that you wanna mention, Mr. Jackson, about that Great Steak Cookoff on May eighth?
May eighth.
This Saturday, right? Yes, sir.
And starting at noon. A and P sponsoring it, fifteen hundred dollars for the best steak, paying the first through tenth place steak. Also have an ancillary contest for anything potato, so if you think you can put something on the table, you got a chance to win two hundred and sixty dollars for that. And
Yes, sir. Would you please come to the mic and kind of drop your, drop your mask?
Yes, sir.
I want, I want the people to hear, we want them to come out.
Okay, yes. Saturday the eighth from twelve to six, we're having the Steak Cookoff, Tenth Annual. And we have music starting at noon. We have Albert King Jr. at noon, Sicily Sicily Wellborn in Chemistry at two, and Reba Russell at four. We, the cooks that enter, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars. It includes two prime ribeye steaks cut an inch and an eighth. Very proud to say that big star, Gene Stimson's a big star sponsoring and providing those steaks at cost. Which, by the way, steaks even at cost are still pretty expensive, but, but they're cooking for a fifteen hundred dollar first prize. And we pay out first through tenth. Also have a Anything Potato Contest. They can, anything that's cooked on the grill on site has a chance for me to, to win two hundred and fifty dollars. We'll have the Main Street Program sponsoring a cornhole bag toss tournament. Also have a People's Choice, so for five dollars, you can come down. And probably will have twenty-five entries in that, so for five dollars, you can have twenty-five bites of steak, which is that should take care of you. And those guys will be, that's winner take all on that, so if you have twenty-five entries, it's twenty-five dollars to enter. That includes one steak, and so they could walk away with six hundred and twenty-five dollars for that. So have
Jim, did you?
Drinks, cold drinks and food there, and good music, and steaks cooking should smell good at least.
I may have missed it, but how many entries do you have?
As of Monday morning, we have thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
And we're gonna cap it at fifty.
Okay.
And, and I think we're gonna have a good crowd. I think people have cabin fever of all the stuff going on. And I want a good crowd who are asking people to please be observant of the restrictions, which, or at least be considerate. So I'm hoping we have a good crowd. I'd like to have the problem of having too many, but, but we're, I think people are gonna have I think if the weather cooperates and looks like it is, I think we're gonna have a good turnout. We might even get the mayor out there to say a few words and give a trophy away or something.
No, I'm gonna take the steak.
Yeah, I know that. I know that. How many, how many bites you get last year, two years ago?
I know.
You don't wanna talk about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate, I hope everybody comes out. Free event, twelve to six on Saturday.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Hutchinson, did that finish your report?
Uh, yeah, that concludes, that concludes the A and P. Like I said, everybody has a handout.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, did Far meet?
We met, but we didn't have a call, so we just, we just sitting discussed. They don't have anything really going on right now, so.
Um, utility?
Utility has not melt, but two, two separate sessions. We met today at eleven o'clock to go over some of the stuff that we talked about today.
Okay.
And then Todd joined the Public Works Commission Meeting the other day and talked about some other stuff, so I'm totally doubt.
Okay. Also, Mr. Peace and Wash, you're here. Could you give an update on the letters that, the utility letters? That the people
We gotta do that.
Yeah.
Alright, as y'all know, we had a major freezing event during the month of February. For two weeks, we had below freezing weather in Arkansas. As y'all know, it also affected portions of Texas. During that time, the electrical system had some issues where the amount of energy flowing on it got reduced greatly. Just, for instance, our coal facilities, the coal piles actually froze at one of our facilities and was not able to produce power. Okay? During that time, the cost of electricity for about a week got high. Not high compared to huge, Texas high in the ERCOT region, but it still got high. Some of the things that help us offset that is we have some fixed price contracts that helped us keep the pricing lower. But our normal cost of electricity, we saw a increase in the cost where I would have had to collect on top of what we normally collect in the month of February, an extra seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When I went to put that into the fuel adjustment, 'cause that was an extra cost, the customers, which their normal rate is six cents per kilowatt hour, it was going to add in just fuel adjustment, three cents. On top of the really high usage rates that they already had. My commission made a decision that let's, instead of collecting that all in one month like we normally do, to only collect a small portion of what we normally do. It was actually a three-year average. It was the previous three-year average, which was sixty thousand. Okay, dollars. Okay? So we collected sixty thousand dollars in fuel adjustment. It lowered the fuel adjustment cost way down, and the cost per kilowatt hour was still low, okay? This past month, I collected three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that seven hundred and fifty thousand, okay? But because everybody, the customer's actual usage was way down, their total bill was not as high. So most of our customers don't look at it and go, well, what's my cost per kilowatt hour? They look at the bottom line and say, is my bill a hundred bucks or is it a hundred fifty bucks? So even though the fuel adjustment was a higher number, the cost per kilowatt hour was higher, okay? Their total bill was lower. So by doing that, we helped the customers. I still have three hundred thousand dollars I still have to collect. It was a total, it was seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. The first month, we only collected sixty. This past month, I collected three hundred and forty. And then this month, I'm gonna collect the rest, and then we'll be back to our normal, what y'all have seen in the past. Again, the commission allowing us to do what they did, it helped spread that extreme cost we had over several periods. And I can tell you guys, we, with our rate structures and the way we've been set up where, you know, what Mayor Johnson instilled to me is, hey, it's better to have a bird in the bush than go looking for two. Having some fixed price contracts has saved us, 'cause I can tell you, I know of communities in that two-week period saw fuel adjustment cost of fifteen million dollars that they had to collect from their customers in Arkansas. So I think we rode through that very well. And it wasn't the contracts, it wasn't our fixed price contracts that cost us. It was our coal plants where they're normally supplying the energy, they went down. And then the cost of that electricity coming from the market. Is that good?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Do we, airport?
They haven't met yet.
Parks? Councilman Monday?
Are we through with all that? You through with them?
Yeah, I mean, do we have any other?
At the airport, I, I was waiting for the airport to say something.
They have a met.
They have a met, that's true.
Have all committees met?
We're in the first week, so.
Now, are we gonna make our new commissioner?
Yeah, we think go to appointments next.
Okay.
Well, we have appointments, so, Councilman Monday?
I'd like, I'd like to make a, a request that we vote for Al Felton as our new, in as our new commissioner.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
I guess just clarification, utility commissioner.
I'm sorry, and you, commissioner, utility commissioner, I'm sorry.
All in favor by?
Aye.
opposed? It passes. Mr. Al Felton is now on the utility commission. He has to be sworn in first, and then he'll take
When you had your next meeting?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday?
Thursday, it ain't Thursday.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, say something here real quick. Ms. Hicks brought something to my attention this morning, you know, to the clerk's office, which was, I'm glad she did. Well, in the ordinance, it states that when you travel, you have to come back with an agenda. And like you say, most, and she brought the point of, most people, most classes, they're not in an actual agenda. So what, I want the senior clerk to get with the city attorney and see what we can work up. I'm just saying, because when they came back this time, the paperwork that we got, they didn't actually have an agenda. And so we don't wanna just stop panning on, I mean, 'cause the ordinance said agenda. So, and that's what I wanted to just bring out, you know, so we can get together on that and kinda, because the auditor, one time, it had, they did write us up for it, you know, not the meals. So that's what we trying to stay on track with the meals, so we trying to see what we can come up with to, to, that will be, you know, suffice for them.
Okay. I had no presentation, just some recognition. This week is Teachers Appreciation Week. So we thank all our great teachers here at all our schools who's doing a wonderful job. Matter of fact, then we got a couple teachers, teachers on the panel. We're at education, Dr. Bruce, Councilman Murray, as well as Ms. Councilwoman Mohammed's not here, but congratulations. I spoke earlier at their convention today, at ECC right across the street. It's Correctional Officers Week, so I appreciate them as well. I know my sister's gonna kill me if I don't say this. Happy National Nurses Week to all of the, the fine women and men that take care of us, you know. We got some, even the fire department and the paramedics department that take care of us when we sick or anything. I definitely appreciate them. And this month is National Mental, Mental Month, yeah. Mental, mental health. Mental health. We got one councilman. It's a choice.
Please, all you can throw my way.
Yeah. And we missed the last council meeting, but it's National Dispatches Week, so we definitely appreciate the women that are truly the first contact in service when we have an emergency here, and I said, so I said, thank them as well. Alright, um, only announcement I have is today at two thirty, we have a grand opening for the Fire Station Two on College Boulevard. So hopefully, after this meeting, you all will follow me down there to the grand opening. Uh, we had three people that signed up for citizen requests. Ms. Kendra Phillips, I talked with her and got the issue resolved, and I will speak with you, Councilwoman Hutchinson, on what that was about.
Thank you.
But we got that taken care of. First, we have Mr. Tawana Murphy. Will you come forward, please? Let me, let me ask you something. You and Mr. Blair gonna speak together? You wanna just do it together? So, yeah. Come, come on down, Mr. Blair. I'm gonna ask you all to just give your name and your address, and we're not allowed five minutes, and, yeah, I know both of you are working together on the project, so.
I am Tawana Murphy, thirty-three, twenty-one Burgess Drive in Memphis, Tennessee. I am the owner and CEO of Project Let's Read. Project Let's Read is a summer program, eight weeks, and that program is to educate our kids on basic English, basic math, and penmanship. And two thousand nineteen, sixty-eight percent of our kids could not read by the second grade. Sixty-nine percent of our kids could not read by the time they got to high school. In fact, they were reading on a fifth grade level. Today, they are three, four grades behind. The summer program is going to start them on basic reading, basic math, and basic penmanship. The other day, I got a email from a parent here in West Memphis. She has a fourth grader that's suffering from depression because he can't read. He can barely read on the first grade level. And he, they held him back kindergarten, and now he's in the fourth grade, and they're gonna hold him back again because he can't read. And so this program is catered to children that cannot read, having a hard time reading, and due to pandemic, they didn't go to school for a whole year. So now we have to double up on their education. And a year, a few years back, I know y'all heard of this thing that they had, this program they had called No Child Left Behind. Well, they left all our kids behind, because at this point, they can't read. Somehow, we dropped the ball. We dropped the ball far as the parents is concerned, and we dropped the ball far as the teachers is concerned. So we're blaming each other, but both of us, we all are to blame for the education of our kids. And so what I did was, if y'all don't mind, if I can use this quick analogy of how to make a sandwich. And of course, we know that the sandwich, the foundation of the sandwich is a plate, that, that's the foundation. But when you make a sandwich, you have the top part of the sandwich, which is the mother. The bottom part of that sandwich is the teacher, but of course, you gotta have some taste to that sandwich, so you gonna smooth it over with some mayonnaise on both. Then after that, you wanna put some meat on there, which is the child. I like turkey, so the child is the meat. Now, we have cheese, lettuce, tomatoes, and onions. That represents the knowledge of our kids. So now you have this sandwich, but we have it stacked up, so we gotta put the mother on top of it. And when you do that, we, now, times I tell them, we eat a sandwich, what we gonna do? We gonna push it down. We gonna push it down before we can eat the sandwich. So we're pushing it down, and this kid is gaining this knowledge, but when we get ready to bite the sandwich, all of the knowledge fell. That's where we felt our kids at. All of that, the lettuce, tomato, the cheese, the onions, that's all on the floor now. But guess what? We still got a chance to save this child because the mother and the teacher is still holding this meat together, so we can actually save this child that's still holding on. Only thing we gotta do is pick up what we dropped, throw that in the garbage, wash our hands, sanitize it, 'cause y'all know we got COVID, right? And then give them a fresh new cheese, some fresh cheese, some fresh lettuce, some fresh tomatoes, and sprinkle some fresh onions on there. And then we gonna try this again. This time, we gonna push it down where it's gonna stick, and now they're learning. So when you bite that sandwich, everything in that sandwich you can taste, which means now you have savored the knowledge that is taught to you. And so what I am bringing to the table, we don't asking for no money. We're asking for your support. So I need you as city council to support us, and I need you, Mayor McClendon, to support Project Let's Read. That program starts next month, June first, and I'm gonna stop talking and let Mr. Blair talk.
We appreciate you all again for giving us this opportunity. As you all know, I work for the school district, academies of West Memphis. And basically, what we're doing is we asking for you all, for y'all's support. And what I mean by support, what we're doing is we just wanna move the needle. We don't have a magic wand. After this program's over with this summer, the child won't be reading on the grade level that he or she should. We are realist, but they will be improved. but they will be improved, and that's what we want improvement. And because this is not a one-shot, one-stop shop, we're gonna, this is something we're gonna do continuously throughout the summer, and even, um, I'm gonna make it my business to get parents involved, because we have parents, young parents who, or, who are, and, and it's challenging to be able to fill out applications, to even go on the jobs. I mean, I know some who even at Family Dollar Distribution Center, they come up there and they, and they walk out the door, because they are, they cannot properly fill out applications. We have the resources here in the, in the city, um, um, for our citizens, but some of them don't know how to take advantage of. And with, e, even with Project Let's Read, this is something I'm gonna take upon myself to make sure I can interact and establish a relationship with our parents that need to be able to do certain things to help themselves. But again, we just, we here to move the needle, I'm a realist, this is not a, this is not gonna, we can't make, wave this magic wand and say we gonna fix it. We need the teachers, we need you guys, we need parents, and so this is why, uh, we wanna, you know, present ourselves in this manner, and and any, and if you all know of any, um, have any connections to, um, we, like I said, we're not asking for money for, to donate pens, any donations, pens, pencils, things of that nature, um, we, a list of things that you all even know that that's needed. Just bring them up to the library, we gonna be in the Murphy Center, real nice facility, love that, love, love our new library. And, um, we gonna be out working in the Murphy Center, um, Monday through Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, there was officers' request, if no one don't have anything, we got the Burgess Library, I mean, not the library, I'm sorry, at the Fire Station at two thirty. Were there any other announcements for any other council people? Here none, I get a motion in second, so join?
No more.
All in favor, bye?
Bye.
Opposed?